Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the first Park and Rec Commission meeting. Let me see if I can set this in a different view here. We have everybody. Okay, introductions. Marissa DeFeo, Jamie Guthrie, Greg Bahoon, Emily Meredith Stein, Eric Rooney, Dave Pecoraro, and Jen Gil. And you all know me. We're calling the meeting to order at 6:30. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to initially take the minutes until we have a secretary, and then I'm going to gladly hand it off to the secretary. So I think that's people, yeah, that want to, oh, John, well, thank you, because it's behind me. So, thank you. Okay. We are going to need nominations for a chair. Who would like to make a nomination? You can nominate yourself, don't be shy.
Well, since everyone's looking like scared. Maybe it's important to appreciate what the role of the chair is and what type of responsibility you're taking on, because it's not as horrible as it seems. So generally speaking, the chair of the, this is a body politic, it's the Park and Rec Commission. The person who's ultimately elected chair is the person who would be responsible to run the meetings, whether it be monthly, weekly, quarterly, or whatever. So you're, you're in charge of running the meeting and keeping the business flowing. So if it gets out of order, bringing order back together. And, but there's not administrative work necessarily, like you have to come out of this meeting and now you have tons of other meetings to do. You tend to be, the chair tends to be the, the voice and the face of the commission. You know, if there are comments or questions, it would go to that person. But generally, the response, the primary responsibility is the running of the meetings.
And setting the agenda.
The agenda. Right, which I presume would kind of, you'd be working with the administrations and talk about things that this body wants to accomplish.
So is this something that we should maybe not do first off before we get to kind of know each other and see what we're all about?
Well, I mean, that's, that's.
It's kind of hard to do that, because it's hard to operate in the absence of a chair, right? Because, you know.
I'm technically an ex-PhD of boards and commissions, so technically I can't really be the chair. So.
Just for the meeting to get us through, like, the first couple of points, and then, I don't know.
Well, you could, you could, you could go out of order, you could, you know, you could, you could put this as the last item on your team, right? So maybe within the next thirty to forty-five minutes, you're a little bit more comfortable, maybe one of you emerges as the leader of the group at that point in time. So you can, you can go, you could pass this.
So, so to do Robert's rules, basically, you would make a motion to move item one to the end. Who would like to make that motion?
I'm going to make a motion to move it to the end. We've got to move item one to the end.
Okay, day, motion. One, two, and who would like to do the second?
I'll second.
Emily, okay. Now, all in favor of moving item one to the end?
Yep, so technically, just to keep them, so now, if anyone has any discussion on the subject, now would be the time to discuss, you can't discuss the matter unless it's been moved and seconded. So if there's no discussion, then you would move on to them.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we move, it's unanimous, we will move item one to the end. Okay. So next item is Robert's rules and freedom of information. So actually, I do have, you'd like to take one and cap it on, it's double-sided.
Thank you.
Just some basic procedural. Okay, give me a chance to look at it, like I said, it is two-sided, so.
Okay, so what you need to appreciate is when you're conducting, this is, oh, your meetings are all public meetings, right? So the first thing to be aware of is that your agenda must have been published or, you know, noticed, but at least within twenty-four hours, the regular meeting must be published at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. So the chair would establish the agenda and post the agenda with the town clerk and then circulate the agenda amongst the committee. All right, so you cannot meet, or it's not considered a proper public meeting, I'm not going to say you can have, cut me, do whatever you want, but it's not necessarily legal. So in order to have a legal public meeting, the meeting must have been properly noticed. And now you've come together, now it's your meeting. Now, in order to take action, there must be a quorum. All right, there's seven of you, so a quorum is four. All right, you must have one, slightly one more than half, or you, but, so, because I don't believe this body has any bylaws that requires more than a quorum. So it would just be a simple quorum. All right, and then, in order to proceed, there's an order of business, and you must stick to that order of business. So if you wanted to make a motion or to take action on a specific item, but for whatever reason, you got staged, right, or just forgot, and that matter is now passed, you know, you don't have that ability to just kind of throw motions at any point of your meeting, you must follow the order of business. All right, that keeps the meeting kind of together.
With special meetings too, you cannot amend the agenda with a special meeting. This is a special meeting. Like I said, the November meeting, that date had already been posted previously, so that would be considered a regular meeting. So that potentially, that agenda could be amended, because it's not a special meeting. But anytime there is a special meeting, you have to adhere to the items that are on the agenda.
And that's an important point, because at your next meeting, if it's in November, or maybe COVID, like, they want me to get you a November meeting, one of the annual things you're doing is setting the year schedule for the, for the coming year, right? So December through the following, I think, November or December. So those are your regular meetings, they're posted based on action of the body once a year. Any meetings that occur other than those are special meetings. It's possible to have an emergency meeting, but according to Freedom of Information Commission, the only thing that would justify emergency is that nuclear weapons are being blasted at us. So it's very rare, if not ever, that you have an emergency meeting. All right, you may have special meetings from time to time, like today. And then, once you're in the meeting, all right, the public is allowed to observe, but at a public meeting, they're not allowed, they're not allowed to participate unless they're permitted to participate by the chair. Okay, so public, if you have a public hearing, a public hearing is different from a public meeting. Public hearing, the public has the right to participate, all right? Public hearing would be if you're considering an action that requires public input. Most of your actions are going to be at public meeting, not public hearing, okay? But there may be occasion that there's public hearing. And then, in order for a matter to be considered, that has to be moved and seconded, no discussion prior to that motion and the second. Once it's been moved and seconded and put on the table, and now there's discussion. If there's no discussion, you can go right into action, and an action would be to vote yes or vote no, or to abstain, or to, generally, it would be to postpone, you want to move it to a future date, or you want to motion to table, you want to take the issue and you don't want to consider it, you take it off the table. In this country, people use the motion to table generally as a motion to postpone, a table, we'll figure it out to next month. That's really not what a motion to table is, it's the, the most misused motion in the country. They consider, most people consider motion to table as a motion to postpone. The actual action is most of them, motion to postpone. If you need to amend your agenda, which you can only do at a regular meeting, it requires a two-thirds vote of the body, okay? So if it's a simple majority moves to a gen, moves to amend, and only half of you vote on that, it doesn't, you don't amend the agenda, it requires two-thirds vote. In order to go to executive session, you're only allowed to go to executive session for specific items, you know, pending legal matters, personnel issues, security issues. If, if it's a legal reason to go into executive session, then it would take a two-thirds vote of your commission to go into executive session. And your agenda, if you're going into executive session, has to state with some specificity why you're going into executive session. You can't simply say executive session. Okay, so that's, those are things that we'd be discussing in advance of the meeting to make sure that the meeting is conducted properly. But again, it's generally, you know, you're, you're, we're grateful that you're volunteers, and we appreciate that you're committing your time for a generosity goal, that you're all going to receive. And so we try to be sensitive to your time, as well as the public's, the public has the right to know, but not necessarily the right to participate. You have the right or the responsibility now to act, and you want to do so intelligently and, you know, with, with, you know, the best interest of the town as your standard. Whatever, you know, so you're not doing it for any private agenda or personal agenda, you're doing it for what's in the best interest of the town. Okay, and if you guide yourself by that standard, you should, whether or not people agree or disagree with your decisions, you should all leave me alone. And you cannot discuss the business of the body outside, you know, of the, of the commission, because that's considered, even if there's only two of you, that's considered an illegal meeting, all right? Because this is the public's business, and the public has a right to know what you're talking about. So the, the reasoning behind, don't discuss it outside the meeting, is the public then don't get, does not get to understand and know what you discussed. So, you know, so it's important. Now, then, having said that, is there going to be times where we bump into each other at Dunkin' Donuts and we have a conversation about, oh, what about this and what about that? That's, that happens. Try not to, is the best I can say. All right, you want to adhere as best as you can to your responsibility to the public so to make everything you've done within the confines of the public. Okay, other than that, there's, you know, if anyone has, as you've evolved in, in this process, we'll stumble forward together, I promise, you know, and if you ever have any questions, I'm always available, so you can just give me a call.
So that, lack of discussion, does that include, like, so the chairperson is going to set an agenda with no input from anyone else essentially?
Not necessarily, well, the agenda's going to form over time, the issue's going to arise, all right? Issues are going to arise about deals.
But what if it's a special meeting? But there's going to be also, if you go on to, because I did some little searching on, like, Beacon Falls, Woodbridge, if you go on with their commissions, you'll see that they have a standard agenda that they use every month, and if you look at some of the other boards and commissions, there are regular items that are kept, like on my board of selection, every month, it's tax refunds, cemetery deeds, and then there's certain items that are there, we're trying to just get resolution and closure on, so the items become.
But that's not, but if you say to the chair, for the sake of the conversation, you know, Commissioner One says to Chair, I would like to have this issue put on the table, put it on the agenda. It's up to the chair if he agrees or disagrees, okay? And if you want to have that power, then run for chair, right? So, but that's not improper communication. It's the discussion of a matter that's currently being considered by the body, right? So if you say, hey, I'd like to have a special meeting next Tuesday at seven o'clock, that's a permissible discussion, that's not illegal. If you would like to say, I'd like to add to the agenda, put in a dog park in, in, on the baseball field, right? That's not, that's not, but, but if that's something that they want to do, as absurd as it sounds, that's a discussion that you can have outside the meeting, because it's not the, it's, it's not the actual substance of what you're responsible to do, it's the schedule, it's the, it's the kind of, you're sporting the agenda. But once it's on the agenda, and the body has discussed it, now it'd be improper to talk about the substantive part of it outside, okay? And yes, the commission should operate, you know, collectively, as, as well, as best you can, okay?
And Ben's brain is always there to pick, so don't, don't hesitate. So any other comments or questions with regard to, you know, our basic?
And just for, for the Comms Secretary, other, the law requires minutes to be filed within at least seven days of the meeting. They're going to be unofficial until they're adopted. The minutes, legally, technically, the only thing that is required are the motions and the votes. So you don't have to sit there, like, you know, gay eye chat where it's getting every single word that I'm, I'm reading, you know, it's, you know, be as basic as, motion, Chair called the meeting to order at six thirty PM, there was a quorum present, one motion, two motion, three motion, motion made by, seconded by, vote results. Motion made by, seconded by, vote results. Whether or not there was discussion, you could say, the body discussed the matter. You don't have to say, you know, and again, I'm just going to draw names, because I don't know all your names, Neil said this, you know, Charlie said that, and, you know, which sometimes minutes get so specific that they're riddled with problems, because people now say, I don't remember saying that, and you can't say this, and, you know, the more specific you get, the more likely it's going to be wrong, right? Because our recollections of what we've said, we don't hear ourselves when we talk, right? And now you're, you're recording it, and it's easier today with technology, because it records it for us. But you don't have to be so specific, if the public is allowed to participate, you could say, members of the public arose to raise the following concerns, and just kind of list the different concerns, you don't have to say, so-and-so from this street said this, and so-and-so, so it can be general, but the minimum that it must require is the motions, who made them, and the results. Okay, so that's, that's on the minutes. And let's see, what else in the foyer that you might view? Emails, email. Again, that's just like talking. You cannot email each other about the substantive work of your body, that's an illegal meeting. You can email each other about scheduling, about agenda items that you want to see put on the agenda. So be very careful when you email, and again, that's a meeting. So don't email amongst the body, so four of you equals a quorum. So if four of you get into this discussion about a matter on, on the agenda, that's an illegal meeting. If three of you get into a discussion, it shouldn't be, it's frowned upon, but it's not an illegal meeting, because it's only three of you, it's not a quorum, okay? So it's kind of nuanced issues, I need reword. Let's see, what else?
I just put a question on that. So let's say we're, we're discussing policy and people are just putting ideas up or things we're going to add. You can't do that over email, that would have to come to the meeting.
Right, so what generally what I do is, let's say, we all leave here and you say, all right, we'd like to start working on our policies. So ultimately, instead of circulating it, and it's always easy to say, well, I'll draft something, and I'll circulate it amongst the body, and then everyone can kind of throw in their comments. That work is what's supposed to happen here, right? So what you could do is say, all right, anyone who has an idea, send it to the chair, so it's one-on-one, okay? And then the chair, at the next meeting, conducts the meeting to kind of bring it all back together, okay? So, and then it makes public work more clumsy, because it's hard to work in between the meetings, you know? But you have to work in between the meetings, and the way you kind of coordinate it is, you go through the chair and you keep it to kind of one-on-one. So anyone has any comments about this policy, send them to me, let's not send them to each other, that's how the future operates, okay?
Thank you.
You're done.
Any comments or questions for Ben?
Jamie has.
It's a lot, kind of, well, I know Jamie had emailed me earlier in the week and about email, because right now you have your personal emails, and there was a concern that if you'd get FOI'd or anything. So I had suggested to her that she set up a specific email, a personal email just for Park and Rec business, because I had made the group, but I, if you want to create another email that is specifically geared for Park and Rec Commission, just create it, send it to me, and then I will replace it on the group email, so when meetings are posted, it will go to your new email, but just you'll have to let me know, so I pull the old one off and put the new one on, if you so choose to do that.
But question with, for that, and this may be a better one for you, so if someone was to submit a FOIA request for, like, let's say, the scope of our Park and Rec Commission emails on our personal email, that's the only scope that they would be able to have, right?
Well, that's, you know, this is where I just, I got, right? And that's why I prefer everyone have official emails, that's outside of my control, right? So I can only say what I recommend. I know more about people than I'll ever wish, than I ever wished to know, and I will take, I will take it to the grave, that's my ethical duty to do, but I don't want to know what pills you take, and I don't want to know who you do them with, right? But if a FOIA request is issued, I have to review your email, that you receive your emails. And while, while, while I will commit to keep silent by anything I may come across that you didn't want anyone else to know, it'd be so much easier if only, the only information on that email was whether it's the business of this body. So I would recommend.
Looking at separate email.
Create a separate Gmail account, if the town's not giving you your whole Gmail, make a, you know, commissioner1234@gmail.com type of, and then say to the town attorney, somebody said, I have to review their emails, it's not that Yahoo account or that other account, it's just this account, okay? It makes my life better and our relationship less awkward.
Can we email that to you?
Email it to me, because I'm the one who created the initial group so that I could send you out the agenda for the meeting. So if you want me to switch that email out, send me whatever new emails you create, and I will, and I will flip it out to put that new one in, okay? So that it will only be geared toward Park and Rec business.
I have a very tiny question, you mentioned that the minutes need to have the results of the votes, does it need to be specific to who voted what, or does it need to say, like, six yays and one nay, or?
Depends on the vote, if it's a roll call vote, which is rare, then it would be by name. If it's a just, a general action, then it would be the number of yays and the number of nays and the number of sections.
Yeah, usually it's, it's a head, it's a head count, there's seven people, so I would know, you know, who's doing yay, nay, or abstaining, so it's pretty easy to list the names.
But, and I'm, you have the right, anyone, you have the right to call for a roll call. Let's say it's a, you know, it's a sensitive subject, and you're like, you know what, I want people to, and you're all pissed at each other for some reason, and someone said, I want everyone to be on record of how they voted, I don't want people to hide in the nays and the nays, you know? So, so someone says, Mr. Chair, I called for a roll call. Right, now, he has to go around and you do it one at a time, that's when your minutes will reflect the vote by name, otherwise it'll just be all those favorable, those things.
Yeah, on that subject, so if somebody calls for a roll call, if anybody calls for it, it's automatically going to be a roll call, is that it? You have to vote on that as well, so that'd be something, it'd be a motion for that, seconded, and then go that way.
And that's, and something like this, there's no action that's going to be taken, but basically, in the notes, I'd be putting Town Attorney Vincent Marino reviewed highlights of basic Robert's rules, basically what's in the agenda, okay? And then if there were, happened to be a motion on it, then it would record who made the motion to approve it, if there was an actionable item, and who made the second, then there'd be the conversation, then we'd call the vote, so.
And it's very rare that you're going to have a vote, unless someone's like, let's do it all the time, and then who comes directly, kill what you do. But I want to see that on, basically, contested zoning matters, that are very kind of big issues, and legislative bodies, like the voice, like, so that's, and not in this town, because you only have three, you know, it tends not to be an issue here, but, you know, in other towns where you have, you know, seven to ten members, like on a town council, that's when you get more than the roll call, I'm saying.
Just occurred to me that I didn't make some of those meetings. The scope, did anybody bring the scope or not? That's the, is this, that's not the initial charge? We just find that. Is that what you're saying about the job scope? If it needs to be activated. Job description.
Does she refer to the job description scope?
What else?
I have something.
Yeah, I don't trust.
I have the job description, sorry.
Where's it, that's the scope of what the commission is? You know how to spell their stuff, I suppose. Which one's the scope? Is it the initial card?
It'd be the one I'd be wondering.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, I had, I didn't know. Yeah, I had that right in front of me, I didn't realize that was the scope.
Okay. So basically, this, these words, some of that motivation. Some of the highlights of the things that you guys will definitely guess initially be addressing in your charge as, as commission members, and, I mean, it seems like a lot to take on, but it's, you know, it will, it will all fall into place, with kind of prioritize what needs to be done first, with, obviously, will be the chair and the commission.
Where do we find the policies? Because I know on the website right now, it says under construction, but where do we find the actual policies? And can we get a copy of those to, like, take home with us to, like, review what they are?
I've got my hands on them tonight.
Okay, yeah.
If I get them, I will send them out.
Okay.
To the emails, so you can have them.
Okay.
What we have on, on record, okay?
There comes a point in time where everyone just needs to be, everyone needs to be intellectually honest, where, where the town is with respect to these issues. And it's unclear on all issues. And it's, you know, it's just the way a community has operated for, to almost two hundred years, okay? Not necessarily got an eye on crossing the T, and it's not one administration's fault or another administration's fault, it's just, it has operated as, as, as it has. And up until a recent event, there were no issues raised or concerns that, you know, and that's because business as usual. So to answer your question, it's unclear where all the policies are. Let's be honest, because if we're not being honest, then we're not doing our job, right? So, and we can provide you with what is there, but there were a lot of things from past administrations that were thrown away, all right? This administration came into office with scarcity of documents, with, we could go through the harshest, and this department was not the one that required the immediate attention, that's why with finance was reorganized, land use was reorganized, this department was on the get-to moment, and then this event happened. So, you know, it's not about blaming current or past, it's about taking a moment and recognizing that what you're about to embark on is re-establishing a department in a manner that is run, in a manner that, in a way that complies with the law, all right? That's another thing that, you know, the attitude sometimes around here is, well, what are they going to do? What is the state going to do if we don't want to comply with the law? Well, that's not the response, it is your duty to follow the law. You may disagree with me, but the law is the one thing that is constant in all our lives. So you have no, no obligation, the only obligation you have is to make sure that what you're doing is within the scope of the law, and that's why I'm here to guide you on those issues. But what you may get may require work.
So we were essentially starting from scratch, is what I'm kind of hearing, which is fine, as long as we know, like, if, if we have nothing, I don't, I don't want to build the plane, like, plane while we're flying, so like, which is what we're doing right now, right? So, so as long as we know we have to start over, I'm sure, you know, the law firm has sample policies that, yeah, exactly, exactly, so, yeah, so.
For you, Dave had done the training with the kids at the end of August, prior to school starting, so I'm going to just give you a copy of that, so you're, you could see what the kids did, did have.
I'll take another, I'll take a hard copy. I never waste my own paper.
Okay, so that, you know, may give you some helpful back down as to, with the kids.
And for a little bit, just briefly, I could kind of speak on this, because I was the. And for a little bit, just briefly, I can kind of speak on this because I was the writer of it. Um, it was basically twofold. All of the. All of the counselors that were over the age of eighteen, the state law was twenty-one. They were gonna log in, they, and I think they, it was completed, they hit the login to the DCF website and obtained the DCF training. Because a lot of the issues at hand, really. The DCF mandates and whatnot were, are gonna assist. That's where, you know, I decided, I said, hey, we really need a minor protection program. So I'm open to anybody taking a look and saying, hey, we should add this to that. I've tried to model it off of Yukon. Um, because with Yukon, I'm a four H leader and their, their policy was really, really good. I actually asked them if we could buy it and just have people log into it. So they, why reinvent the wheel if we have to pay? And there's, and it's now, we, we don't do that. It has to be Yukon members. They kind of directed me to some locations to go to get some information and I tried to mirror it as best as I can. So training was a combination of the minor protection program. And then it explained some of the differences with the DCF law. And in addition to that, they had to have the DCF training if they were eighteen.
Did all the counselors have to both sit through this program or was it available to them that were expected to read it or was it something?
So they actually were here. So yeah, they actually sat through it. And now these were all the counselors over eighteen. Um, you know, who were, were there. So a lot of them had already gone off, I think, and, and, you know. Were on summer vacation or whatnot by that point. Um, but assuming there was gonna be. You know, park and rec for the coming school year, the goal was to get them up to speed and, and that's where it was. So that's kind of, so again, since everybody has it, you know, it'd be good as a commission because I kind of put this together quickly. Um, but you know, we can obviously go back, but I think, you know, going into policies. I definitely think a minor protection policy is. Almost mandatory at this point. And then obviously the DCF training is almost easier because. We're gonna say, hey, you need to have the certificate, it's online, it's available. And really nobody could argue with that. It's. Yeah, you know, it's through their site. And just so everybody knows, I mean, it's open to anybody. So anybody here, like I, even though I've had it multiple times to work, I took it through the site. Just to see what it was and it's, it's very comprehensive.
Although I will say, having also sat through that, it, right, it's, it is very comprehensive, but. There's a distinction to me between, I'm kind of like the DCF mandated reporter training and just kind of like. Good practices when working with children, um, where I feel like your presentation does get into those practices more so than like the DCF. So I almost feel like we need to run.
Yeah.
And that was the goal. I tried to put them both together.
And I've taken that too, and it's very easy to flip right through it just to say that you're done and. Instead of fully comprehending what is actually being said, you know, in regards to that.
So they kind of get it twofold. One, they get it from there and then they sit through it or, and that was something we were talking about changing it to, you know. I, I think it'd be great at some point to get it online, you know, where I work, everything, it's policies, you click through the policies, you know, if you read. Um, it's just a, a challenging in the initial phase to do that, you know, so it was just putting it together first and at some point we could decide. Hey, is this something we wanna have available online? Or no, everybody took it and, you know, and for how long we watched it.
What I'd also gathered for you, I did, um. After last week's meeting, I, I went on to look at different associations in the state or nationally or whatever. And there is a Connecticut Recreation and Parks, they. They flipped the name instead of Parks and Recreation, they made it Recreation Parks to be consistent with the national. Organization. So I actually went on there and it says, what is Parks and Recreation? And there's a few job descriptions and things and posters and pictures, take them and pass it around. And then I just went on some random, I did an indeed. Um, search to see. What jobs may have been out there for director of Park and Rec as well. So I pulled off a few of those. So there's that. And then I reached out to CCM. To regard to any information. They have a, a department that does research on different categories and things. So I asked them if they had any information on. Parks and Rec director. So they sent me a list. It wasn't all one hundred and sixty-nine towns in the state. Um, but what I did was I pulled the ones off of it that had um populations. Sort of within a scope of a couple of thousand below us and a couple of thousand higher than us, supposed to get an idea of. Of what they tell, what the title of the position is. Do they have a minimum, maximum salary, what the actual salary was, is it full time, part time, that kind of stuff? But it would not have taken, one of those, that piece of information for you to, to have, to take a look at. But the. Effectively pulled up the pertinent information, um, this is the spreadsheet that he sent. If I was thinking it on paper, probably would have been about longer. They had more columns in it than uh. So. But. There's really no action for us to really take on any of this scope tonight because there's information you have to kind of take in and really look at. And what direction um. You wanna go? As far as, you know, posting and, and the job description, because I gave you the job description of our current position. Last year. So you all have that. To, to do in comparison to the, to the one, like I sent it out to you. So.
So the next. Task related to that job description. Is for us to all come to agreement about. How that description should be or the existing one can be posted as is?
Well, the, the existing one was written in two thousand and five. Um, they had, they hired a consultant to come in and do a review of, of a lot of the job descriptions and, and positions here. Um, so that, you know, that we really wanna look at it. Is it? Succinct, is it up to date? And the funny thing is, I think last week someone mentioned that it had, Bob, Bob Britton mentioned that it had my rec listed and it's apparently. Tell, you know, how many years ago? Nineteen years ago, they were looking at that, that program. Um, so.
But this body would come to a consensus. And then make a recommendation to board selection. Right? So it's not that you're the ultimate decision maker on it, but you ultimately don't get board selection. But this body would be making a recommendation on the adoption of it based upon what the consensus of this body.
And is the. I'm just trying to figure out the timeline and what we can do to make really good decisions about that and not hold it up.
Well, but that would be one of the things as to how. Soon you wanna have another meeting. I mean, because I think right now we're, you're, you're in a. A working mode to kind of get things rolling. So it's the potential that you may have to have a meeting every two weeks for the next. Few weeks, just to, to kind of be on top of things and get things really rolling. Otherwise we're gonna get caught in a quagmire and not really aggressive at all. So.
And you can be as aggressive as you want on meetings, right? We don't wanna comment, you're certainly gonna be meeting every day, you know, but if you wanted to, you could. Right? Meaning that you just have to have twenty-four hours notice of your posting of your agenda. So you wanted the quickest meeting you could have following today would be. Friday, right? Friday afternoon, right? You're not gonna do that. So it's probably gonna be Monday. But, you know, so, but generally we'd like to say two, two meetings a month. It'd be doubling what most meetings.
Initially, that doesn't, that doesn't mean it's gonna be the norm, but I think if we really want to get things rolling. We need to be sort of aggressive on this and, and, you know.
So, so we, we meet as a team, come up with what we would recommend as a job description. Then we, then the selectmen have to have another, another meeting, right? So would that end up being like a special meeting depending where it felt like, right? You know, to not hold it up. And so then, like, how long does a job like this typically post force?
Well, you could, you could post it open until filled.
Okay.
Because you could get someone who applies within a couple of days that. Is a, is a viable candidate. Um, cause I worked in personnel for like twenty years. So I know that if you put a deadline on it and that passes, then you have to go and you have to repost it again. But if you just post it as open until filled. And you just, the, the resumes keep coming in and then you just, you know, things. Keep looking at them.
So then our charge would be kind of coming up with a job, a draft job description that we send to you. That you then bring before.
With potential posting, I mean, you could almost have them in tandem, you know, because you're gonna base the posting off of the job description basically.
But then you bring that to the board of selectmen. For possible action. And then after it gets posted, let's say there's several viable candidates because we're super lucky. Um.
Bring them back to you.
So we screen them.
To screen them and vet them and yeah.
And then is there a minimum number of candidates that are required to go before the board of selectmen for final? I wasn't sure. Some places have like a requirement that you have to bring a first and a second. Uh, okay.
I mean, if you have two that are just like neck and neck. For that lucky, I mean, you know, so, but.
And are those interviews also allowed to be held like in a public session? How does that work?
I, I kind of have a suggestion about how, how to potentially do them, just because I'm working at AMITI. It's something that superintendent did and I actually found it was really beneficial and I could pull in the public and the community into it. Um, so it's almost like a, like a round robin. So we had four, four candidates going into the assistant superintendent position. And the candidates were each stationed in a classroom and there were groups of about five to six. Um, it was mixed between staff, students, parents. Well, uh, well, representations of the community members and they, it was like around, we went to each candidate. So the candidate sat in there and actually was. Really nice because you got a lot of, you did have a lot of views on it. And then the top, the top two went to like the selectmen to make like the final.
If all those groups were meeting with those candidates, how was the information compiled as?
We all met afterwards. So, so, so the groups met afterwards. In um, in, in a meeting and there's, you know, pros and cons and, you know. Everybody, everybody had a voice. I mean, you know, it, it was just a way to pull people in. So, you know, I'm sure there's people in the community here that would like to be a part. Of it, of it. And I mean, we could ask for volunteers for that. And then ultimately it might have to go to something where we like. Randomly like put them on a wheel and pick them, right? Because, because I, you know, I think that's the fair way to do it. Um, but I think that it would be a nice representation of it and to pull the whole tap, the people, people from the town to have different.
Cause you're also like speed dating of each group.
Oh, I thought that no candidates, but you know what? It was, you know.
So along that line, I just wanna make, you know, some input on that. And I think that's kind of the purpose of our commission. You were kind of tasked with that. And, and truly in the interest of time, you know, and again, that's assuming we have all these candidates, which is probably a high probability we're not going to. Um, I think we just have to move and, and actually get things working, you know? I mean, we're not gonna make everybody happy. We have to just acknowledge everybody's not gonna be. Happy. That's the point of a commission is to come up with something and, you know.
And then you'll be sending them to the board of select.
Right. And then it's selected by, so I mean, I feel like we should probably just. Get it moving, you know, if we start doing round robins and, and whatnot, I just feel like that's gonna take a lot.
It was, I mean, it was relatively quick, but. I mean, I'm open to whatever anybody, anybody wants to do. I just thought it was.
It's right, no matter what you do.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be right.
No, no, I, I get that, you know? I think that's being here, some of us aren't, you know? But the interviews do have to be public as well? That seems.
Generally, no.
But any discussion that we have about those interviews. Would need to be in a meeting.
I was gonna say, wouldn't that be a personality issue? I was gonna say, I thought, because it's a personality issue.
You would have to have a scheduled meeting with exec session as an item to make a mention of that.
Right. And this, this is not a Dunkin', a Dunkin' Donuts conversation. It's, it's a public meeting, but then you're journeying into anxiety session.
Cause it's a personality issue.
Do we, uh, do we have to say on the salary and all that stuff?
Well, our finance person is here, so she can, she can answer that, that, I mean, we have a budgeted amount right now. Obviously, when a budget was set for fiscal year twenty-five, a salary was set, so.
Okay.
Yeah, she, but she, she is on the agenda here to kind of go over some budgetary stuff. So I think you'll probably get that answered at, at that point. Um, but yeah, so I, I have given you a bunch of information. Um, if, 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 you know, we wanna look at meeting in a couple of weeks again, so that you can process all this information and come up with some thoughts. Thoughts, um, and what direction. You know, if everybody's schedule allows, we can move forward. Um, you know, Ben's a little aggressive with the every other day kind of thing.
I, I, we'd like to ask, cause I do, I have to catch a plane uh for my son's uh parents weekend out in California. Uh, his college. So is there anything that you absolutely need me for? I don't think so. I'll only delay you, I promise. Uh, but if there's, if following this meeting, anyone has any questions? You can get my email from the first live woman. My, my telephone and my email is always open to you. So don't hesitate to send me a question. My philosophy is communication with commissions upfront saves time on the backside. So, you know, don't rush to accomplish, but rush to a question, okay? And uh, I will always get back to you within, you know, the day generally. Okay? So, and my, the, the number that you have will have for me is my mobile number. So I, you know, wherever I am in the world, you'll be able to get it. Okay? Yeah, but we will talk about that. I just didn't wanna upset you again this week.
We're good.
Yeah, I'll be in California, but um, I'll be back on Sunday on red light. Okay?
Okay, so basically you've got the scope. I've given you some general, you know, background information. Like I say, there are other towns that I went to Beacon. I've tried to go to neighboring towns, kind of comparable to, to us. Um, you know, Woodbridge. Uh, Beacon Falls. Yeah, but I looked at the commissions because I was trying to look at their agenda. Um, and, and what they had, and it seemed like they always had regular. Items like facilities, personnel, budget, um, you know, the basic stuff that you would generally be reviewing on, on a regular basis. So, um. You know, other sites were, were kind of checking out, but I, I tried to give you some of the. I, I found the Connecticut, I think, to be honest with you, I think the Connecticut Recreation and Parks, I have to, you know, they do it backwards. Um, might be a good association for the commission to consider joining as, as a resource. Um. I don't know what the cost was, but I didn't get that far into it, but it's something to think about if the, the commission. Um, you know. So, okay, um, now we have the budget. And I, everyone, this is Leslie. She is our finance director. And she's fantastic. So. These are our numbers for them.
I, I don't wanna scare you, but I did make it official so that if anyone has a personal, as a question. My contact information is. It's all right there. The first page. So that, you know, oh, right, thank you. The page on the top. Is a printout from our current account and software system. Which tells us what was budgeted in every line under the Park and Rec Department. What was spent in that line and what the balance is for the rest of this fiscal year on the very end.
The fiscal year for here is January to December, is it Ju- July first?
Yes. That's the top page. To want to take in? Well, the second page. Is going into a little detail to explain some of what is there. It also shows what was budgeted in the revenue for this year. It tells you that summer camp was budgeted to bring in two hundred and one thousand dollars and right now it's. We're still reconciling the credit cards. Because of refunds that were issued. So I'm not exactly positive. The exact dollar amount, but it is, it is in the vicinity of two, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The before and after school program was budgeted at a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Now, obviously, that is not going to happen this year. Um. Program revenue was fifteen-four and the grant was thirty thousand. That was in conjunction with the BCS and that will not happen. But there was also expenses budgeted for that of twenty-six thousand dollars. Those expenses won't happen either. So that's. It just isn't going to be there this year. Then on the expenses, I had some detailed. Um, to back up where that park and rec salary line of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars came from. The details are in there. It was broken out into this summer camp, the before and after school program and all other programs. And it shows what was budgeted for the fiscal year and what was spent. To date on it. There's also, I mean. I put it in color so, because. There's some breakouts on some of the salaries, just so that you can see that information. So right now we're showing that there's still a hundred. You know, year to date, we spent a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars out of the five hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget. What was budgeted for the director's salary, that was for both the director and the assistant director at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. To answer your question. Um, right now we have spent approximately, we have spent forty-seven thousand dollars of that line. But that included. But that included accrued PTO payout for the director with the resignation, which we had to pay out. So that's why that breakout is in there for you to see. The next page in the handout gives you some background information. We have pulled, we pulled the raw data, data for fiscal year twenty-four. Showing you all the expenses for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The revenue was three hundred and thirty-three thousand. Net, the net of that was a loss for the department at sixteen thousand dollars. However, I did, the bottom part pulls out and it adds back in the costs that were allocated to the programs for the director's salary. Because in my opinion, the director's salary is a given. It is not necessarily attributable to any program because none of the programs function without a director for the Park and Rec Department. So I don't think it is necessarily fair to say a portion of the wages. Well, yes, you can say a portion of their wages are attributable to every program and you should factor that into the cost of those programs. But every department has a department head, whether that department is a revenue generating department for the town or not. So it is your decision to decide if you want to factor in the salary for the director in the cost of the pro, in the revenue that you want to generate for the programs and do you want the revenue that prob- that the programs are generating to also cover that salary? That's your call. You know, because you can make the argument either way, in my opinion, okay? But
Just because I know that you have.
To consider a program self-sustainable, all of your expenses for summer camp should be covered by all of the revenue for summer camp. So the same thing goes for under programs, that in- that includes the before and after program. It includes hoops. It includes the baking classes, it includes the art classes, but the program should be broken down further so that you can say, well, is the art program self-sustaining? Are hoops self-sustaining? So you bring each one down to the granule, to a granular level to figure out if you are charging enough to cover all the expenses associated with it. That's why I'm saying you can make the argument either way, whether or not the director who is overseeing everything is included in covering that. That's what I had. Oh, I I added a few extra goodies on there. It includes the town's purchase policy. And the reason why I gave it to you is because as a department head, they are allowed to purchase any item for the department that is necessary up to a thousand dollars without question. After a thousand dollars and up to five thousand dollars, it also needs to be discussed and approved with the finance office. So I also have to sign off on it. Between five thousand and twenty thousand, we need a powwow. It needs to be the department head, the finance director and the first selectman. We all have to get behind it and approve it. If it goes over the twenty thousand, then we have to go to a town meeting and the town has to approve it as well. I'm giving it, I gave it, I included it in there because some things that you may look at would fall under capital items, you know, do you need to improve any other recreation facility? That's a capital issue. That's a separate item that you should be looking at that. What, what areas need to be improved? What needs to be repaired? Is there something that we're missing? We know what we have done in the past, but is that all we want to do? What else do we want to do moving forward? All things to think about, all things to take into consideration. Well, that's why I gave you as much information I ca- I could at this time for what we look at in our office. That's why my business part is also there. So you have a direct line to me should you have questions or you want to discuss something further. You're not quite sure how to approach an item. Because I, there's there's a lot of things that Park and Rec Departments could do, might want to do. Is it feasible? Has it been done elsewhere? I have experience with a couple other towns, so I'm happy to help you there. And while this year's budget says there are seventy-two thousand, seventy-three thousand dollars left right now for a director. That line in currently includes both the director and the assistant director. That's two people on that line. Okay? That does not mean, but I am changing the way the program, the way the departments report um, salaries going forward, wages going forward. There will be two lines going forward. Mo- multiple lines. There will be one line for all department heads. There will be a line for all full-time employees. And then there will be a line for all part-time employees, your counselors that work. Whatever they happen to work, those that were working to before and after school program, the summer camp, they are considered part-time employees. If there is another person that is hired in the, in the capacity of an assistant director or a spec- or a recreation specialist to overview, oversee programming. It's your, if if they're a full-time employee, they will be, they will have a separate line next year. And if you mean, whatever you want to add, whatever you want to do, we can do. There are the titles on here are just as they pertain to this year. This is what's left for this year. Minus whatever we are going to continue to pay on the administrative leave for the current. That's why there's details on that one page.
And know that the budget process starts probably in November.
Yes, budget process starts in November. And I have to have the budget finalized to go to print in March. So it's not that I'm telling you, you have to act fast, but there are things to take into consideration.
Um, Leslie, may I ask a question? Um, if I'm remembering correctly, at one of the recent Board of Finance committee meetings, there was a discussion about some of the funding that's in the current Park and Rec line going to offset the JCC. Is that reflected in these?
That is not reflected in what you have in front of you, but I do know that information. Okay, um, the intent was to take any current surplus between um, the cost for the summer camp and the revenue from the summer camp. And add to it up to eighty thousand dollars from that second payroll line that says that started the year with two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. For a total of one of, it's approximately a hundred thousand dollars that would be coming out of that line to support the J, the program at the JCC.
Thank you. So that doesn't affect our director's salary lines?
No, it does not affect the director's salary line.
Now, Leslie, if I may, I have one question too. Um, for the director's salaries, it just says the two of them together.
That is the two of them together.
Is there a breakdown? Like what courage for this fiscal year up till? Am I missing that? Where the actual?
Okay, if you look at the page that has the yellow highlight on it. It will give you the bi-weekly.
Okay, okay.
For the assistant. So multiply that by twenty-six, that's the annual and the balance is the director.
And then subtract it. Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. But there was a there was there were five weeks of vacation plus additional time that was part of the payout. So the the payout was significant, which is what has that line well-spent at the moment. But that does not, I do not want where the budget is right now to impact your decisions and your abilities to find a new director. Okay? Because payouts are never budgeted for. They just happen.
Yeah. I don't have any questions for that thing.
She did give you her card. Fun, like your question, we're about twenty-five percent of the way through the fiscal year?
Yes.
So though on the right side, if we're trying to balance, we're aiming for twenty-five percent.
Correct. But what is, what?
But this is a different year.
Well, no, no, but there is one place where that twenty-five percent never um, applies. And that is on that line with the two hundred and eighty-eight. Because the breakdown for that line, half of that line is for the summer camp salary, is for the summer camp wage, counselor wages. And uh, so that line is going to be very close to fifty percent spent by the end of the first quarter.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Because that's all day long. That's, you know, it's like okay, Nick, what was it, like eight A M. to six P M.?
Yeah.
Five days a week.
Right.
So with the before and after school program, it was an hour before and three hours after. So you're talking four hours of wages for maybe a dozen people versus
Ten hours.
Ten hours, you know, ease, I mean, a day for twenty counselors, maybe, you know, it depends. I mean, so there's a lot of this wage money is tied up with the summer camp. A lot of it is.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for Paula or you, but it says, is, it says, there's harvest festival. And so family day money in there. Is that now, is there things that Parks and Rec used to do for that that now are not being done? So it's something else that's not being done because Parks and Rec is not running?
Well, I think Janice did a lot of bringing of things back and forth and and helping out with that, but I I'm already working with like our facilities manager to like it was the popcorn, I mean, it was the ice, uh, snow cone maker, um, you know, different supplies and things.
I just want to make sure they're not missing out, like the kids aren't going to miss out on. Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Candy, though, they couldn't get a sponsor for cotton candy. So there's no cotton candy this year.
That might be the deal breaker on that.
When when the software was designed, when they just decided to plug that in to Park and Rec's department as opposed to a freestanding.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something that like wasn't, was not being done because Parks and Rec is not
Yeah, no, we're, we're making sure that the A C is going to be up there for them to to use. So that's, that shouldn't be a problem. But any other questions?
I don't know if this is, but I've looked at, like you said, a lot of the towns nearby, Beacon Falls, Woodbridge, Orange. None of the other towns seem to have an assistant director that's full-time salary. And they also offer a lot of programs that we do. Is that something that if we we don't need to have that?
We need to investigate and see, see how they, how they do it. What, what is their, their, do they have other besides an assistant? Do they have a programs coordinator? Do they have, you know what I mean? So then they may have other staff that fill in those pieces.
So they're generated, they're basically come themselves, I would think.
Self-sustaining programs, potentially, yeah? Yeah, so that's why I say it's good to check.
I think part of the charge is to figure out how you want to organize yourself and the department to move forward.
Yeah, yeah.
So, nothing is set in stone. It's all changeable. This year, you can't
You have to stay within.
We have to try to stay within budget for this year, but I understand that that may not happen. And then we adjust accordingly. That's up to the Board of Finance to figure out, you know, if you run into issues filling based on the parameters that were, that this year was set with.
And that's why I tried to give you that spreadsheet with the comparable towns with population to get an idea what their salaries are looking at. But I also, it doesn't tell you the number of programs that they have. It doesn't tell you if they have an assistant or a program coordinator or that, you know? So there may have to be a little more delving into those communities potentially to find out what they do. But uh, so. Thank you, Wesley. Um, and then the next item is, uh, Bethany Hoops and other programs and events now, um, I know that the Harvest Festival, we've kind of discussed, we will, we have to put, and then we will get the things there that need to be, to be there. There is Trump or Treat, and I know Park and Rec always had a table. Um, but I just went down into the candy closet and the only thing left there are sour patches. If if somebody, I mean, because you all, some of you have little kids and you come there with your children to to do, um, you know, Trump or Treat. So I don't know if we can get other volunteers, if you want to have the table or we don't have a table this year because we're kind of, you know, in flux, so to speak. Um, that's a decision you guys can make if we have to. We will go out and get candy if you want to have a table. I could like, we have blowups that we could have all kinds of blowups for sure. But that's a decision to make. I mean, if we decide to meet in a couple of weeks and you, you still have time to, to kind of orchestrate that somehow. Um, and then the, uh, I think the other ones. Trump treat. I think that was it. I think that was Trump or Treat is the only one. Um, but yeah, but Bethany Hoops, I know you had, you had mentioned. And uh, we have to make sure checking with the insurance company because we don't have a director and you guys sort of come under the umbrella of the town. If someone chooses to run it, we, we need to really have eyes dotted and T's crossed as to who's going to oversee it. Um, who's going to organize it? Who's going to schedule it? Who's, I mean, there's a lot of pieces to that.
Where is any, I mean, I know Nick like has it, but like where is any of that information of how things have been done, like how they've operated?
In the office, I think there are some files and things down there. So there'll be some delving into that. You know, find the old forms and and update them, obviously, if we're going to do it. Potentially, is it now a shorter window of time? I don't know when I, so I don't have kids that play, so I don't know what.
Early December to early March.
Oh, it, it doesn't start short, okay.
Yeah, we gotta get things.
Can I say something real quick? Yeah, if this is something that we definitely, this is dire because I don't know how recent that she would make gym state rentals, but I was just talking to the Amity Middle School gym people and uh, it sounds to me like in the past, the director usually made the rentals pretty early. So I feel like if we are going to figure this out and make gym state rentals, we've got to figure this out soon. So we need to get it set in stone with the middle school. I don't know how.
Was, and BCS used as well?
We didn't use BCS yet the last, but we did for Saturday. We did for that.
Is Jim here if we had to?
Actually, no, just second and third.
Yeah, right, just for the second and third, we did.
Well, I mean, this gym is now done here.
Yeah, would that be viable?
Right, the school has four baskets too. I mean, don't you use the side baskets in the, in the, the school?
Yes, we do it for the second and third years because we have such large groups that we want to be able to have them play two games at once. So we have them on the side baskets.
But I would imagine that you could make these things that Janice used to do now. You could make the arrangements.
Well, I could.
I mean, I, I couldn't help it. I mean, I, I, I mean, I shouldn't. Well.
Well, so why don't we take our first one? Can we move that forward tonight?
Well, I will investigate, I will investigate the availability of um, the BCS and and I'll work with you on AM.
Yeah, like if, if Nick, if you would have, like if we could, if, if someone lets me know like how often we need it.
Yeah.
When, like when we need it, then I can go.
December through.
Yes, first week of December, we do the tryout dates for the kids and then we're all the way to.
楊sree can start mid-October, so.
Okay, so we might be a little behind on that, but we'll, you know, we'll, we'll get there.
Would it make sense to schedule a special meeting just about getting Bethany Hoops up? So that would allow us to then get like the forms and the documents that are existing in the office? Like look at gym rental space, talk about like push out dates.
With October tenth, I mean, I know it's, I know it's two weeks out. With October tenth, I mean, I know it's, I know it's two weeks out, but we start to, we start to complete at the beginning of the month. With other meetings in these rooms at the beginning of the month, so I'm trying to, that's a Thursday, right? I have a commitment most Thursday.
I could do Wednesday that night.
Wednesday the ninth, I'll, that's fine.
That's two weeks from tonight, right?
Can we make that Bethany Hoops in and talk about the director? Yeah, like, yeah, I don't, I think that's kind of. I know, that's, I know.
Is there no possibility of sneaking a meeting in the week of September thirtieth, October first, that week?
What, what we deal with it, September thirtieth, you said?
Every Sunday, Wednesdays are kind of good, so I'm posting them on four nights a week.
Yeah, so actually that Wednesday.
October second?
Heading and zoning in this room, but.
Now, when it's. Public, does that mean it has to be hybrid or just people just have to be invited?
Well, most commissions and boards do not um meet hybrid. But seeing that we have about twenty-three people that are interested in, in the happenings here. We could certainly post these because I will be in attendance, so I can. You know, get the ball rolling and get us up and running on uh hybrid, so we can certainly continue to do these hybrid. Um as long as the commission, you know, wants to, that's fine.
Do you see a twenty people for the commission meetings, Nick?
What'd you say?
How many do you used to get for commission meetings?
Look, if you get a corner.
So there were four meetings in the past four years.
But I think at this point, as much transparency as possible.
Yes, there's no problem to do the hybrid.
I'm very colloquial and informal.
So that's fine.
Do we need an official vote for the second?
I mean, I would second it if you.
I mean, it's by consensus if you, you know. So.
The first work for anybody by any chance? Can we do the first?
I can't, I've ordered a select meeting, so.
Can you join us virtually?
Uh actually, if there's, that's.
It's gonna be hybrid.
Yeah, so you know, that'd be, that'd be good. Yeah, I could do that.
Okay, and we'll make it six thirty?
I'm telling the agenda would be Bethany Hoops and the director.
Yeah, Bethany Hoops and, and a job posting director, job posting, so. And then, like I said, do we want to talk about? Trunk or treat? Why don't we put that on there just as a conversation, just in case we decide to move that?
Yeah, just because it is close.
Yeah, can we take action on it now? We wanted?
Yeah, I guess you could.
The question for, are we just gonna have a table? That's what it is for.
Well, basically, it was a table and I think, and they were strategically positioned because they were right next to the Bethany Athletic Association. Anthony could be at both tables because he's on the B A A in.
Can I ask you, what is the relationship with the B A A and the Parks and Rec? I feel like they kind of.
Well.
Coincide a lot.
They've been around a long time, both of them. Both organizations have been around a long time, so they, they kind of help each other out on different events and things. So the B A A basically has done fa- field maintenance back. Many years ago, they used to help with the, the fa- the baseball fathers league and, and stuff like that. So the group has gotten smaller, but yet they still do a lot. They do the Easter egg hunt, they do the fishing derby. They do a lot of the other, the carnival is their big one. Um so they, some of those events they've been doing forever. And so they sort of kind of help each other out when necessary.
Like the bocce, you said a bocce league?
They do have a bocce league, it's, they, they still do the bocce league, yeah, yeah, so um. Yeah. So, all right, so I, I, I got. Seeing as the, the last item is to get your secretary, I'll be doing the minutes apparently for this meeting, so we're good.
Do we wanna do, do we wanna talk about trunk or treat now?
So I'd like to make a motion that we. Participate in the trunk or treat. I think it would be a nice opportunity. For local families also to meet the new park and rec commission.
I mean, even if you take turns and don't necessar- like all seven of you don't necessarily have to be there for the, because setup is. By the mock, I think. Well, we, we'll, we'll figure out how to get candy and um, you know. Made the motion because we should, did somebody make the second before we started discussing? Cause the conversation started so quickly, I didn't know if they were second in the, okay.
It's a discussion.
So now, yes, so.
Any discussion about participating at the trunk or treat?
So we'll make sure actually that you're next to the B A A because they always seem to go in tandem. They have their set spots. By the, by the building. So and then we'll, we'll see what kind of um. Blowups, you know, that we had inflatables that we have that we can uh have there to it, so. And then if you want, what we can do is we can still put it on the agenda for next week so that we have, we have to do any final details. We will be able to discuss it so that it's still on the agenda um for next week, so.
So we have to officially vote, vote, right?
Yes, I just wanna make sure that we are done with any discussion, that we are gonna go forward with it, you're gonna go forward with it. And um we'll, we'll figure out the candy for you. We'll, we'll get bags and whatever we need to, to make sure that you hand out.
We decide on that candy as a commission.
We'll, we'll get like those mixed, the big mixed bags and bowls and if we can't, you know. I don't know how energetic everybody wants to be bagging candy, but we'll just improvise with some Halloween bowls and, you know. We'll make it work, so. So any other questions, comments on trunk or treat? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, okay? Okay. All right, now the moment you've all been waiting for is uh. Have, do you feel comfortable enough having done this meeting now um to, to come up with uh officers for? For the commission?
Is there a time limit to it? Like is it, are we appointing tonight a chair for a certain amount of time?
Well, right now, you've been, you, you came on board last week, um you know, sworn in. Technically, according to the term, uh the code right now that's in place. Your term would go to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, with the two-year term. Okay, so I mean, at any given point, you potentially could change chair if. You felt, you know, the need to, to make any changes. But it would be good to. To get those positions in place so that future meetings, like I said, I'm ex officio on those boards and. Commission, so I'm there more as a, a guide to kind of help out, but I'm not a voting. Member of the commission, okay? I'm just there sort of as a resource and a whatever. So.
If nobody else wants it, I would be happy to be chair.
Ooh, she volunteered. Anybody wanna second that? Everybody seconded that one. I heard Craig first, so um any other nominations? All in favor of Jen being the chair? That was unanimous? Okay, but now we need a vice chair. So is there anyone that wants to volunteer or somebody wanna nominate someone or?
I'll volunteer for vice chair.
Okay.
Is the vice chair just a backup?
A backup if the person's not there. So Dave has, has volunteered. Um do I have a, a motion for that? Okay. Okay, and a, a second?
I second.
Eric second, okay? All right, is there any other nominations for vice chair? All in favor? Unanimous, oh man, what a group. Nice. Now we need a secretary, someone who basically, as, as Vin had, you know, uh mentioned. And I will, I will show you, I'm gonna do these minutes and I will show you basically what the format is and. Um like he said, you don't wanna do, it's not like you're doing a um deposition. You, you don't need every word, you need the basics of the conversation. And if these are hybrid, they are um taped. So people can always go back to, to look at a video if they had a question about something. But basically, it's a, a basic rundown of, of what happened at the meeting, so. Anyone wanna be secretary? Look at these people just low and cheering. All in favor of Emily as the secretary? Nice. Okay, the last item is basically a motion to adjourn. Who was the second? Thank you, everyone who attended virtually. Um enjoy the rest of your evening. And thank you, everyone.